Welcome, everybody. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council and the City Council serving as a successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board. February 6, 2018, this is our 6:00 PM regular session. And real call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember McKee.
Present.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Mayor Protem Zavala.
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present. Is there anybody in the audience or council that would like to give an invocation tonight? I see none. We'll stand now and the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag presentation and Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Troop 1606.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the City Attorney's Report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the City Council. We have no reportable action tonight.
At this time, we'll take an approval of the agenda. This also will approve the consent calendar and whole. I believe there's only one item on it.
So moved.
Our screen looks a little different there. All right, I have a motion by you.
Somebody hit that mover?
Hold on one second. Some technical difficulties. There we go. All right, Mr. McKee, and seconded by Ms. Parks. Any other discussion? I see none. Please vote. Mr. City Clerk.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to go into public comments. This is pursuant to Brown Act. Any persons make comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council not listed on the agenda. So that basically means if you want to speak on an agenda item, you have to wait till the agenda item. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall take, not take, action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council, so shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. First up is Eddie Johnson, followed by Jeff Horton.
There. Mayor, council members, city officials, and residents of Desert Hot Springs. My name is Eddie Johnson. Vietnam Vet. I'm also the Veterans Park caretaker. We now have new forms to order tiles at Veterans Park. The price has changed to forty, not fifty, and we're asking any veterans who would like to purchase a tile, please contact me at seven six zero six seven one four six eight seven. I do have the forms with me. We will also need to show proof of DD 214 discharge papers will be turned into the city to make sure these people are being honored correctly and not incorrectly. And I'm very honored to do this now, and we have forty-two blank tiles, and we're going to fill those up soon because I have a lot of people very interested, and we're going to improve that park a lot more as we go on when time goes by. Thank you very much for your time. I do have the forms.
Thank you. If you can't find that form or you missed his number, City Hall will have it at our clerk's desk. Jeff Horton, followed by Judy Shay.
Mayor Matt. Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. My name is Jeff Horton. I'm a resident of Desert Hot Springs Veterans Liaison for Mayor Scott Mattis, mayor, city council, also staff, and residents of Desert Hot Springs. I'm also the post commander for the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 1534 in Desert Hot Springs. Just a few announcements. February the seventeenth, the VFW Post 1534 from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, we'll be having the Veteran Service Officer from Indio's office at our post to be able to help any veterans or widows, as well as children, get their benefits through the Veterans Affairs. If you show up on that date, you'll be able to get your claims done and help you out with your benefits. Fourth District Supervisor of Riverside County Manny Perez put on a show for February the twenty-first at 6:30 PM at the Empire Polo Grounds at the Rose Garden at eighty-one eight hundred Avenue, fifty-one, Indio. This event is free for anybody that wants to attend. It's recognized the VFW Post, American Legion, DAV, or any type of military organization that we have in the Coachella Valley for Fourth District. They'll be handing out awards and distinguished honor awards at that time. February the twenty-second, Mr. Johnson here, to my left, your right, will be receiving the Veteran of the Year Award at the Indio Day Festival, as well as the VFW will be posted there as well. We paid to get there to set up a booth so we can help veterans and be able to do claims at the same time there. March the third is the Veterans University hosted by Congressman Dr. Raul Ruiz. That will be at the Aguacaliente Casino on Bob Hope Drive at 10:00 AM. It's, I sit on the board there, and there was a lot of information that was given out. March fourth is the VFW Poker Run. It starts at Joshua Tree at 7:00 AM in the morning. We actually leave, it's followed by breakfast, then we leave about nine o'clock. It goes to American Legion Post 519 at Palm Springs, and then to Post 739, American Legion, Indio, then it stops back at our post where it ends. We'll have live music, food, and everything else to go with it. If you want more information, check out our Facebook page or go to Instagram. We are an Eventbrite on that one. March the thirty-first is the VFW First Annual Golf Tournament at Takwitz Creek. We also have a list on that emailer. If you want to email me, that's at veteranspost1534@gmail.com. I will get the information to you. We have other events coming up, but it's too far out in advance, and I will announce that at the next City Council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your service and what you do for us, Jeff. Judy Shay, followed by Don Schulte.
Hi, Judy Shay, Desert Hot Springs. Okay, now, good evening, everyone. I was on the news on the five o'clock, the six o'clock, and eleven o'clock, so now I'm a star. Woo-hoo! Anyway, I really didn't want to be on it, but, and as a result, the video that Vince Marino did from KMI RTV had four thousand five hundred hits. And of that, four thousand four hundred ninety-eight were positive, and there was two that were negative. I have one person that's down the road from where the center is, the Veteran Center, and she's got a lot of misfacts. And Doria, I love Doria. I think she's wonderful and doing a wonderful job, and she did get some facts that were not quite right. I do have here in front of me, which I did say that on the video, the permit, right here, I wrote it down here. The plumbing permit was approved on eight-two, August the second. The electric was approved on eight-twenty-three. The ductwork for the air conditioning and all that stuff was approved on October the eleventh. So, you know, we replaced a hundred and twenty single panes of glass, okay, with T-1158 inch with the approval of the city. I do have the exemption for any California Care Licensing right here. I already turned that in. I also, fair housing, that where they told me I need to have a conditional use permit, the fair housing regulations say no. Okay? So, you know, what more can I say? I've done my homework. It's been three months since we passed our last inspection, and if there's anything else that we need to do, please, you know, work with God, work with me, and, you know, I'm not God, work with me and get this done and get it working. You know, we really need, I mean, I've turned away seventeen people, men, veterans, seventeen to date, that could have been, I couldn't house, I only can have six, okay, without requiring all kinds of other stuff. But, you know, of the seventeen, six of them could have been placed. We had one in the homeless count. They wanted to take him to Riverside, and he said, "No, I'm going to stay here in Desert Hot Springs and sit in front of the Rockies AMP forever," I guess. But anyway, I have the documentations. I said that, and I have, you know. So please, give me as much consideration as you do the marijuana people. Give me as much help as you do a lot of other people. I haven't got a dime from y'all, and I didn't expect a dime, but I'm getting to the point, if you want me to do something major, please help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Don Schulte, followed by Danny Schaefer. Danny Schaefer is the last blue card I have if you're here to speak in public comments. Items that are not on the agenda, this is second call. Don, good to see you.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, staff, City Council, Mayor Mattis, and the fine staff of our city and its residents. I haven't been here for a long time, and I'm coming to comment on Desert Valley disposal. I've probably talked about them three times before, all in a positive light. Unfortunately, not this time. I don't know, a month and a half ago, we were all giving out flyers for city pickup to have your items curbside Sunday night, the twenty-first. And trash pickup would begin the following day. Now, what they do is they follow the normal pickup, you know, cities divided into five sections, as far as I know. And never is our trash picked up on Friday, where the fifth day. They're always too busy. I talked to a lady down at DVD. Unfortunately, I did not get her name. And she said, I can't say it was a friendly conversation. It was basically, "Well, we're really busy in Desert Hot Springs, and, you know, it's just too bad. I could put you on a special pickup," which I guess would take away one from my annual pickup, which I don't use anyway. What they didn't pick up, it's six and a half foot long vanity. My wife and I are both in our sixties. I've had a stroke seven years ago. So I'm a little weak. We were able to carry it out to the curb, and those trucks' beds are bigger than six and a half feet across. And that Friday, they, there was a Hertz truck that was picking up all steel items. And these guys, thing must have weighed, but they were picking up three hundred pounds, which is over the limit from what they said. And come Monday, the twenty-ninth, a week later, it's still sitting on the curb. Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, I tried to get ahold of Chris.
That's your three minutes.
Oh, man, that goes fast.
But what I'm going to have you do is meet with some of the staff members off to the side. They're going to get you some information.
Okay.
And get your information. Find out if it's still there. Thank you, Don. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Danny Schaefer, final call for public comments. If you're here to speak in public comments, items that are not on the agenda, blue card in the back. This is final call.
Evening, Mayor Batias. City Council members, city staff and residents. My name is Danny Schaefer, the CEO of Pioneer Industries, out here from Denver, Colorado, invited by friends Mark McKinney, Guy Edwards, and other kind of, call it residents of Desert Hot Springs, out here to discuss cannabis tourism. We're about six weeks into our feasibility study and expansion plans. We've been successfully operating cannabis tourism business in Colorado, the nation's first since about September of 2014. In a short period of time of seeing the opportunity that presents itself in Desert Hot Springs and getting to meet a lot of the council members, Mr. Bickford and the Hoteliers Association and others, really excited by the opportunity to come to Desert Hot Springs. In doing some due diligence and just seeing the municipal codes and things like that that have been defined, would like to request the assistance of the city in defining a work session to help kind of spell out some of the regulations necessary to provide the proper framework for cannabis tourism, specifically in and around cannabis consumption and other elements that will, of course, need to be addressed at one point. Also targeting some degree of assistance from the city in defining a municipal license for operators like myself that would like to come here to the community, bring tourism, and of course, do so responsibly to have a positive impact. Would like to, again, lay the framework to ensure that we're proactively circumventing some of the challenges other, you know, cities and counties have experienced in this realm and really capitalize on the opportunity. In seeing the kind of history of Desert Hot Springs, the application of wellness, just the hot springs themselves, the access to Joshua Tree, as I explained in previous meetings, I think all of the ingredients are here to do something really big in cannabis tourism and to set a really good kind of format for the rest of the country and the nation to demonstrate how this can be done well, and I'd like to offer my assistance in doing so, and of course, want to just thank you for your time.
Danny, thank you very much. Welcome to the community. All right, I have nobody else in the queue. If I see no one standing, I'm going to move on past public comments to the City Manager's Report.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I have met with Danny once before. Meeting again tomorrow, I believe. Is that correct, Danny? Yeah. And so we are soliciting him to bring his business and his expertise to our town, and we'll be following up with the council with further information as it progresses. And that's all I have at this time.
Any other department heads? I see none. Move on to mayor and council member comments. Who wants to go first tonight? Ms. Parks.
Why not?
Or Ms. Zavala. You got in there first.
Yeah, I got in there first. Well, I may sound a little different today. I'm battling a cold, like so many people out there right now. It's terrible. But I attended a RAP Board meeting, a RAP Grants Review Committee meeting. I participated in the pit count with our leader here, Joe McKee, and our group was with, I was in a group with Rocky, and our group alone counted fourteen homeless people in Desert Hot Springs, and that was just our group alone. I also attended a microloan board meeting and the Women Leaders Forum Sixth Annual Women Who Rule luncheon, so that was pretty neat. But other than that, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to keep it short and sweet.
Ms. Parks.
Yes, I have a few more things. On the eighteenth, I attended the meeting of the Coachella Valley Regional Housing Trust, and we discussed the progress on the program to get Desert Hot Springs renters into homeownership. We're in the process of getting the funding, and I will have more info on that in March. I attended two funerals for ladies active in Desert Hot Springs, one for Jo Bickle. She's known mostly for her musical talents, playing the xylophone at Grace Church, and Anne Mae Moss, known for her work with God's kitchens, a neighborhood group, the Women's Club, and many more activities. Unfortunately, both of the funerals were on the same day at the same time. So I went to one, finished that one up, and then ran over to the other. But both well-attended and two great ladies that we've lost. On the twenty-first, I worked the Rotary Concession Stand at the Career Challenge PGA Golf Tournament. Rotary does this every year to raise funds for scholarships for Desert Hot Springs students, graduates, and Rotary mans the stand all day on the seventh hole every day, Thursday through Sunday. Quite an experience. It was very cold at 7:00 AM setting up the booth to get started and up and running. In fact, I was freezing. January twenty-fifth, I attended the LAFCO, the Local Area Formation Commission Administration Committee, followed by the commission meeting in Riverside. Nothing to report relating to Coachella Valley or Desert Hot Springs. That evening, I attended the Desert Hot Springs Historical Society Soup Supper, maintaining my perfect attendance of attending every soup supper for the past nine years since they were first initiated. I'd like a little applause. Thank you.
I can tell she's not shy to ask for things.
And I, along with Annie Elliott, attended the Women's Leadership Forum, recognizing women in the Coachella Valley that have made significant contributions through their work and her investment. Those honored were Kaia Thurston Frere, the Helen Galen Excellence in Education Award, Denise Wilson, the Desert Visionary Award, Patty Newman, the Mary T. Roche Community Leadership Award, and Reese Manning, the Women's Leadership Forum Trail Blazer Award. And the audience was also introduced to this year's twenty-three scholars and provided for the fundraising that the efforts of this group provide every year. And then on January twenty-ninth, I attended the LAFCO Local Area Formation Commission Summit in Santa Ana Regional Training Center, received updates on all procedures, on meetings' agendas, et cetera, needed to properly follow procedures. On the thirtieth, I met with Greta Carter with High Road Consulting. We discussed what she has on the back burner for the future, and nothing discussed at this time. On the thirty-first, I attended Painted Hills Middle School Band fundraiser at the Aguacaliente in the Cuiya Ballroom. Many schools in the Palm Springs Unified School District performed, attended by many city representatives, had a great turnout, and I hope they realize their fundraising goals. On February first, I attended the Historical Society Monthly Meeting and then attended the Library Author Series in Carl Mason. Author was Allison Lenore Annalora, and the book is Late Blooming: My Gender Journey. Very good presentation, and that concludes my remarks.
Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Homeless Committee of SEVAG. We discussed specifically a initial report on how Path of Life is doing as far as implementing the program that's been in place to help alleviate homelessness in the valley. I attended the Hoteliers Meeting. Mostly what was discussed there is the fact that they're, especially the older spas, are getting sued by people for ADA problems and how they're dealing with that. Two few, well, two programs honoring two people that had died, Anne Mae Moss at the Vista Montaña. Anne Mae was everywhere, and I don't know how we're going to replace her. I mean, she was, she was a ball of energy and all over the place as far as I'm concerned, and anytime you went to anything in the city, she was there at a desk handing you something. So this is a real loss as far as I'm concerned. The only positive thing from that, other than honoring her, was I found that Chuck actually has become Rodney Dangerfield as far as presentations are concerned, and immediately got into a comedy routine that sort of surprised me a little bit, so that was interesting. Also attended the Jack Webb Memorial at Rotary Park. I agree with what's been said here, specifically Yvonne and some of the other people. This has been a heck of a six months to a year of losing people that have been involved in this city for decades, and it's just been a sad period of time. I attended the Classic Concert Series. I think Yvonne went to those two. She didn't mention them, but it was really interesting because you went from site to site. They were at three sites, and they had a different musician at every place. It was very, very interesting. I had a discussion with the staff on general plan prep specifically revolving around the art zone. We had the pit count finally. It took a little bit of time to get going. I want to thank both the staff and specifically the chief because he was forced to drop in and talk to some of the Path of Life people, but most of all, to the people that participated. My colleague Annie Elliott here, I think that's the first time you've done it, and I think what it does is it opens people's eyes. Last year, we counted forty-three. This year, we counted sixty-five. So there was a significant increase as far as numbers are concerned. I think most of that increase, though, came from the fact that we did a better job of counting rather than there is a fifty percent increase in homelessness. At least, I hope that's the case. Also had a homeless meeting at the RAP building that was basically mostly providers that talked about the various programs that were in place. I attended SCAG, which is Southern California Association of Governments, talking mostly about Proposition 64, and it was mostly revolving around a bunch of people that haven't done anything yet. It was sort of a surprise as far as I was concerned. There are several communities, Needles, Desert Hot Springs, Cathedral City, Coachella, and other places like that that have really jumped in and tried to figure out what's going on, but the vast majority of people on this committee I'm on were still trying to determine what they were going to do, which is sort of interesting as far as I'm concerned. I attended the Painted Hills Middle School Breakfast and spent about two hours answering questions, mostly from people from Rancho Del Oro, and telling them what was going on as far as the city's concerned. I learned there that the Painted Hills Middle School Concert had raised seventeen thousand dollars, so that was positive. Today, we, I think we all were in a position, we talked to Urban Futures and are getting into the nuts and bolts of the next two-year budget. As far as I'm concerned, that's the biggest thing we do is budgeting. We do set some policy much to the consternation of some of the staff, but the reality is our biggest chore, I think, and our biggest goal is to make sure that we're spending the money efficiently and not doing anything stupid. The final thing I'd like to say is sort of an announcement, and I've been told by some people up here and even my wife not to do this, but I think that this is fair from the standpoint of my experience with running for office. Because of how long it took me to get ready and try and run, I will not be running for office in November. So I'm hopeful that a few other people will step forward, and I know we've got enough people in Desert Hot Springs to take my place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKee. McKee for president, 2020?
Yeah.
No? You said this office, you didn't say any other office. Mr. Betts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to echo my councilmember sentiments regarding Anne Mae Moss and Jack Webb. It's, people have just put in a lot of time here for the city, and it's tough to lose them. Attended the Southern California Association of Governments Meeting, Transportation Committee dealing with, this topic of discussion was vehicle miles traveled. That's supposed to be where you pay on the mileage that you travel rather than paying at the pump. All kinds of question, every question that can come up in your mind is coming up in their minds as they try and sort through it. The only thing that was comforting is that the person who gave the presentation seems to be cognizant of the fact that this isn't going to be an easy one, but Sacramento seems to really want to do this. Attended the Airport Land Use Commission. Nothing related to Desert Hot Springs came up. Attended Sunline Board Meeting and with the dedication of a new hydrogen fuel cell bus. I think we're in the ninth generation at Sunline on zero emissions vehicles now, which no other agency in this country is able to say. Doing a really good job. Those vehicles are going down the road, and the only pollution they're putting out is water. So, good, good, good deal there. Met with Palm Springs Unified School District Superintendent Sandra Lyons to discuss some issues regarding Rancho Del Oro and some issues of living close to a school, and also some issues regarding distribution of funds that come in specifically. My view that if there's large donations received by the district, they should be distributed evenly among all the schools, not just targeted to a few schools. Our band, award-winning band, gets a wonderful trip to Sacramento while we hear about other schools, Palm Springs and Cathedral City, going to Australia, New Zealand, and England. And there needs to be some equity there. It's just not, it's not right. Attended a budget review meeting here. It went on almost two hours, but it was a very good meeting, and we'll be getting a report from staff, but for now, the finances are much better than they were. Continue to meet with residents on their concerns. And then finally, to an announcement that we just heard from the other end of the And then finally, to an announcement that we just heard from the other end of the dais, not good news for me. Joe, I've enjoyed tremendously serving with you. I know that when Joe was running, we had some inkling that finances were askew, but we didn't know the extent that information was being kept from the council. And typically, when you run and get onto a city council, you're looking to improve things, you know, put in new roads, new parks, have things, tangible things that you can see that you had a hand in creating. Joe gets on the council, and first thing he sees is, what is it, $6.9 million deficit, crisis, budget cuts, two years' worth of really tough, difficult times. Not a fun time to be up here on a council. I happen to tell everybody that's coming up to the podium, sorry, there's no money, and we're going to have to cut and make do. But I'm, you know, there are a lot of people, this council is certainly be congratulated on guiding us through that, especially when you see the numbers where we're at now, and the city manager happened to step in at the right time, an interim city manager helped a lot, Bob Adams. But Joe, I think you were extremely instrumental in guiding the city through that very, very difficult time, and if, I know we've gotten some other stuff done here recently, but you should be very, very proud that you helped dig this city out of that and get us to the point we're in now. So I know that, I hope you change your mind between now and then the time you run, and you could take that as an endorsement, and you can, I guess, after, it's on camera, but really sad, and you've been, I don't want to take this much time on this, but you've just been valuable to me as somebody to look to and get some advice from, so very, very sad to hear that.
I appreciate that, Russ.
That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I have a few things, but before I go on, I was not able to attend the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Madam, Councilmember Parks actually attended for me. I was attending a Riverside County Transportation Commission Workshop, not realizing that when we start that second morning, which was the same day as this meeting, they usually start at 8:30, and I just assumed it started at 8:30 by looking at my agenda, not realizing the executive director for RCTC would actually be speaking at the CVB, and they were starting later, so actually it was a good, it was a good time for Ms. Parks to be able to go down and see what's going on at CVB, so I'll let her give a report on that.
Okay, thank you. I skipped right over that. Yeah, I did attend the CVB, and one thing I want to say is, when I was mayor, I was the member on the CVB, and I can't tell you how much that organization has improved in the last four or five years. Absolutely amazing in what they've got on there. They have an ambassador program that our Hoteliers Association should consider being part of, and hopefully, Joe, you can work with Bruce Abney and try to get that grouped. It's a great investment, you know, considering, and, and yes, there was an update by Ann Meyer, who is the RCTC General Manager.
Executive Director.
Executive Director on the progress for the Amtrak rail to the Coachella Valley. It looks good, but it'll just take time, and it probably will not be in my lifetime. The Restaurant Week is scheduled for June 11th, June 1st to the 17th. So far, there are 63 restaurants participating. You can go to www.dyinggps.com. They are also working on a trails list. Hopefully, our Trails Committee or group will be working with the CVB in getting their participation, in getting people up to use our trails. We need to participate, and I am told we are. Thank you, excuse me, very much.
You're welcome. To piggyback on the CVB, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, they do a segment through Andy Lasco, who was hired by them called The Wander List. And if you have never seen it, it's in its second season, it had 14 episodes last season, and they do a small 15, 20, 30-minute video on different programs. Well, they're very interested in the marijuana industry and especially in the cultivation industry, so Candaceant was gracious enough for a tour along with Freedom Flower, and I gave, I gave them and their production crew a tour, and then they decided to come back and do some filming, and I was fortunate enough to do some filming with them on our cannabis industry, and then they actually went to Candaceant and filmed the rest of it. So that should be coming out, I believe, in, at the end of this month, I think their target is. So if you, if you have never seen it, you can go on the CVB's website, and you can check out all the Wander List. They have some great, great things in the valley you just never think of, so it's, it's a good opportunity to see those. Desert Valley Builders Association had a presentation on the cannabis industry, and I did, I did my presentation. I did a little longer presentation on kind of the update of what the city's doing, kind of tied into the cannabis industry, and so I was able to do that with the cities of Cathedral City and Palm Desert. The Riverside County Transportation Commission had their annual workshop. They always come out here to the valley for their workshop, and this year was hosted by Indian Wells. Indian Wells Councilmember Dana Reed is the chairperson, so they hosted it at the Hyatt Hotel in Indian Wells. The workshop focused on quite a few things over two days, but the main discussion was SB1, which is the transportation, the gas tax that you're paying now at the pump, and how that'll be utilized in the future. Obviously, there's a recall out there for this, and they'll have to wait and kind of see how that goes. So we kind of outweighed the options of if the recall does take place and does happen, how that will affect transportation in the future and the funding, and then we also outweighed if the funding continues, how that will look at the local levels and what we can plan for in the future. Once this is done, we can actually reach forward into some of those funds and bring those forth so we can work on some bigger projects. Talked a lot about social media and how the Riverside County Transportation Commission, every county in the state of California has a transportation commission, and a lot of people don't know that, and they don't understand how the money funnels from the state through the commission to the counties, and sometimes even further, like ours, which is split up into regions. Coachella Valley Association of Government takes a portion of it out here in the Coachella Valley, focuses on transportation, and so they did, they did a pilot study on social media, and they spent about $5,000 and got major hits and positive comments. For those of you that travel to the West, you'll find yourself a lot of times locked into traffic, and so the recent expansion of the 91 was a bigger project that we had done, about a billion-dollar project, and utilizing social media helped people understand how to utilize that road a lot better and where to go. So it was a very interesting discussion on how we're going to use social media in the future. And then the tolling, there was a discussion on tolling, with the new tolling roads coming about and what the future looks like on that. I also attended with some councilmembers the Night of the Stars, Painted Hills Middle School, Dr. McDaniel, Brian McDaniel was named one of four Teachers of the Year for the state, and he was one of 25 teachers nominated for National Teacher of the Year. His state, his requirements, he's actually given a handle that has, he gets to go around and speak and do other things. Unfortunately, that night was booked for him. So he had other schools participate, and his principal, his volunteers, they raised, I just heard, $17,000, which was great. Their target was 30, but $17,000 will help them. Next Sunday, this coming Sunday, he's taking the whole choir, the Advance Choir at Painted Hills Middle School, and they are traveling to Sacramento free of charge, paid by the school district, to perform for the governor of the state of California. So they'll be traveling Sunday, and the only reason I know the agenda is because my daughter's in the band and my wife is accompanying them. So Sunday, I have to drop her off at 6:00 in the morning, and they will be traveling Sunday, performing Monday, and traveling back Tuesday. So wish them well and safe travels. That band is amazing. If you haven't been able to hear this, this middle school band sing, the Advance Choir, it is amazing. I also attend Jack Webb Celebration of Life and Anne Mae's. Again, everything's been set up here. We've lost some great leaders of our community the last six months, and this just adds to the list, and very nice to get out and speak, hear good things about these individuals and speak about them in public because of what they did for our communities. Coachella Valley Association of Government's Transportation Committee met yesterday. There's CMAC funding that's coming through, it's about $30 million. There's been talk about signal, signarization throughout the valley for a long time regionally. And what we finally did is put together an option that that money's going to be put to work, the engineering. All cities except for two are participating as of now, and this is a project that's been talked about for a long time, just never funded. The City Ranch Mirage is not participating, and the City Indian Wells is not, has not made a decision yet to participate. The Desert Hot Springs already has a $2 million grant that we received last year for the Palm Drive corridor, and that's part of our, we don't have to use the CMAC funding because in our grant for that funding, we'll be synchronizing our signals as they go down Palm Drive, but that was part of the study. With fiber optics and everything else that's coming into our city first in the Coachella Valley, the way they're coming in, we'll be able to actually almost be the first city in it to really synchronize under this new, new technology. So it's exciting. They're bringing a shuttle that drives itself around Stagecoach, or, not Stagecoach, which other one, Coachella, Coachella Fest. And because they're doing that, CVAG's reaching out with about, it's about $50,000 to bring the shuttle from Michigan and demonstrate it, and they're going to utilize this, so it's a non-driving, you did one of those, it was a SCAG. So they're doing this again, they're bringing it out for the Coachella Fest, but CVAG's going to utilize it and actually take it off of Coachella during the week between the two concerts and move it to the CV link that Cathedral City has started their portion, and show in the future how you could take possibly bike riders, passengers, or people that are using the CV link, off of the CV link to other events. So it's a discussion about the future, Riverside County Transportation, CVAG, I know SCAG, I know Sunline, have all been talking about these futuristic transportation opportunities, and so it's going to be kind of a cool thing come April, to be able to go out and test out this and see how it works. Attended multiple meetings, you've heard a lot going on here tonight. We get really pounded with meetings and events this time of year because of Coachella Valley is just so full. But the one that I really appreciated was the Christian Center of Desert Hot Springs at the 8th and Palm. Judy was there with me and my family, and we celebrated with them the beginning of their 50th anniversary here in Desert Hot Springs. They actually met for the very first time at the corner of Palmer Pearson, where the city council chambers are, or the city council offices are now, and they eventually built their building at 8th Street, and 50 years later, they're still serving our community, and they've set a goal this year, not just to celebrate, but to actually give future an opportunity in ministry and to help out our community, and it was really fun to sit in their, their service and worship with them and be able to give them a proclamation on what they've done for our community in the future. So I thank the Christian Center for that and their service to our community. With that, that's all I have tonight. We're going to actually move on in our agenda. To our administrative calendar, our first item on our administrative calendar is item number four, the Appointment to the Planning Commission. This is a holdover to last meeting, from last meeting, ratifying Councilmember Parks' appointment. Ms. Parks, your appointment.
My appointment is Gary Gardner, and he is in the audience.
Wave and jump up and down, Gary? You don't have to jump up and down, I was joking.
He's, I believe, I believe is a very, very good appointment. He wants to be active in the community, he's shown a desire, he's actually been working with, with the mayor on several things, so I think he will, it will be an asset to the Planning Commission. Thank you very much, Gary, for accepting the appointment.
I have a motion and a second, but before I get to that, would anybody like to make any public comments on this? I see no one standing at this time. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Gary, to Planning Commission. You'll meet with the city clerk, and they'll get you all the information on the next meeting. Item number five is the Request for Development Impact Fee Deferral Agreement with Attachment Lean Agreement from Snyder Interests LLC, and this will be from our city attorney, Ms. Marotti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is a request from Snyder Interests LLC to enter into a Development Impact Fee deferral agreement with an attached lien agreement. The reason why there's an attached lien agreement is because if there is no payment of the development impact fee, it provides security for the actual payment of the diff. Please excuse me, I'm just going to use some round numbers here. First of all, it's a, the project itself is a 14.6-acre project located on Little Morongo Road between Pearson and Dillon, and currently Snyder Interests for that project owes the city about $825,000 in diffs, and Snyder Interests paid $110,000 in diffs so far, therefore leaving about $716,000 still due and owing to the city. The agreement itself would allow for the diffs to be paid over, for the first two buildings, it's a three-building project, for the first two buildings over the course of five years, and for the, an equal installment of $55,000 approximately, and for the third building, it would be in, in a timeframe of no greater than six years total from today's date. So with that, that this, their staff does not have a recommendation, it is merely to provide the city council with Snyder Interests' request of this Development Impact Fee deferral agreement. With that, I know that Deputy City Manager, Mr. Rainey, wanted to go ahead and make a few comments, and then, of course, we could be available for any questions.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. At this point, I would like to invite Mr. David Snyder to come up to the stand. I have some pictures here of the site that is, of the two buildings that are currently in place, and if you have anything to add as I go through these, you can explain to them what, what's going on with these buildings here.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Do you want me to tell, describe what you're showing?
Sure.
Okay. That, the picture that you're showing there is the north side of the Phase 2, which is the second building, which would be the middle building of the three. That space will be occupied by Candaceant on a lease that we signed with them. You can see the very front of the spaces is warehouse space, and then they've taken, I think, either five or six field houses of greenhouse.
Okay, and I'm going to go back to where you can see two buildings here.
That is the north side of building number one and the south side of building number two. Both, we ended up actually slowing down on building number one and moving ahead quicker on building number two because the tenants had timeliness issues and needed to get in there. But both those buildings are essentially have the same structural components to them, and some of them have remained as greenhouse, and some have chosen to operate as indoor cultivation facilities.
Okay, and just a few more points past these pictures. So each of the three buildings has the potential to employ up to 70 employees, and based on the current taxed structures for the first two buildings, there's an estimated annual tax revenue of $1,323,940. Building number three, we estimate revenues at about $661,000, which is basically just an average based on the first two buildings. So at this point, this completes our presentation, and we'd like the council to consider this option and ask any questions to staff or to Mr. Snyder.
All right, it's time, I have Mr. Betts in the queue.
Do you have any questions for staff or Mr. Snyder?
Comments?
Just comments? Comments, thank you. I did take a tour of the facility, it's very impressive. If you take a drive down Little Morongo, you can see the number of jobs, excuse me, that have been, that are being created just now. It's just a huge amount of activity going on, and it's really a real boost to the economy as it has been with all the new buildings going up. And I have met with Mr. Snyder on a couple occasions to, so just in full disclosure, discussed this to get an idea of what was being looked at. We've done very little by way of economic development. As far as supporting the industry, it's pretty much been, you know, we've obviously done the work we need to, to get permits through and that type of work, but we haven't done a lot as far as any type of consideration that you would see normally when you're trying to attract this number of jobs in this type of industry. I don't think the, the deferral on the diff fees is a big problem. We've, I think the city attorney has worked this out to where we're going, we have enough security that we can collect this, and I'm sure you're in agreement with the security that's been put in place. You realize that this isn't something you're easily going to be able to skate on these payments.
No, I, I understand that fully, and I think that the agreement that we worked out with the city attorney ensures that these get paid, so, and I'm, we're comfortable with that, with that assurance, giving that assurance.
And so is our, you know... And so is our, you know, we're getting, as Luke explained, we're getting significant tax revenue coming back in addition to these diff fees, and it behooves us to do what we can to move these projects along. I think this is a reasonable step, so my intention is to vote in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Zavala.
I had a question, and, you know, you answered it for me already, I think I brought it up with, to you earlier, but I just want to make sure that you'll be correcting the lien amount from $660,158.76 to what's actually owed, which is $716,171.99, right?
That is correct, and I should have mentioned that. It is on page 14 of your packet. I used an incorrect figure, the figure should reflect the $716,000 amount.
Thank you.
I'll just make a few comments for full disclosure. I've talked to Mr. Snyder many times about this project, it's an important project. I think we've seen his tenants be very good tenants in other operations in our community, and I think we need to move forward. Financially, this works for his group, and I think we need to not allow a development to go under and allow his tenants to move forth, so I'll be supporting this also. Mr. McKee?
I've met with Mr. Snyder also, I think only one time though, so much less than you guys. I support this project, I think that in the future, the city council, because of the possible future tax revenues that we're going to be getting from the marijuana industry, has to become a little flexible as far as what we're doing and supporting the industry and making sure that they can get going. I think some of our competing cities are snapping at our heels and doing things a little differently than we are, and we've got to be a little proactive about supporting the industry, especially considering the taxation is good as far as I'm concerned. But my focus are well-paying jobs and all of these projects that are going to start creating jobs that just have never been in Desert Hot Springs, and that's what's really positive as far as I'm concerned. So thank you.
Do we have any other comments for Mr. Snyder while he's up here before I open up public comments? Thank you very much tonight.
Thank you very much for your consideration, appreciate it.
Open public comments now, would anybody like to speak to this item? You may come forward, state your name, and three minutes will begin. Second call, final call. Okay, we'll close public comments at this time. I'll entertain more questions of council and/or motion.
I have a comment, I'm back in the queue. So, earlier, that was just like my question, because it was the question period of the, of this item. But I do have some concerns with the length of the deferment, the length of time. I mean, we're looking at five years for Building One and Two, and then six years for Building Three. I think for one, I'd hope that as a council, we don't get into the habit of deferring development impact fees. I mean, this is something, you know, anywhere you go, any city you go, you have to pay your development impact fees, and that's just how it goes, right? If you want to go to Disneyland, you have to have an admission ticket. So, you know, I think in the past, we've had some issues deferring development impact fees. I mean, literally, we're dealing with one as we speak, and the only reason why we're seeing a light at the end of the tunnel is because of his unfortunate passing. But, you know, we get into these back and forth, back and forth situations, and the five to six-year term to me is pretty long. I mean, in five to six years, there could be an entirely new council appear, entirely new admin staff, and sometimes, you know, people use that as an opportunity to say, hey, create a little confusion and say, oh, well, no, that's not really what it transpired, you know, such and such, you know, five years ago or something, and then they kind of use that as leverage to ask for more time, and we've also seen that happen. So I would feel more comfortable if we would shorten that extension of time. I think two to three years would be a pretty reasonable extension, considering that once your private improvements are done, your cash deposit and the amount of $540,000 will be returned to you after a period of one year, and I believe you're almost done with those private improvements on your property. So that $540,000 is very close to the $716,000 that are owed to the city. So I think that with the fact that your project is valued at $19 million, I think a two to three-year extension is, you know, I think it's very reasonable, considering that you'll be, we'll be returning that $540,000 cash deposit to you.
All right, I have Mr. Betts in the queue.
You know, I appreciate the comments down there from Councilwoman Zavala. We have had issues on this before. I've led the charge in, you know, being in an opposition to this kind of consideration. But I do see that the jobs, in other instances, we didn't have the kind of jobs, the good paying jobs were coming in, and I just view this as good economic development to help with moving this industry along in our city. I'm looking at what it'd take now to go and recalculate all these numbers and then come back with, either do that now or come back later, and I think the difference between three years or whether it's five years and three years isn't going to make that big a difference in this agreement. So I'm comfortable with the way it is. It's, if that was the proposal right now, you know, and all the numbers have been crunched that way, I'd be willing to look at that, but I just don't want to see changing it now. So I, it's good thoughts and good catch on the numbers that were wrong, I knew that you would do that. So I'm comfortable with the way it is.
Ms. Parks?
Yes, I tend to agree with Councilman Zavala, Councilwoman Zavala. Considering that they will be getting a refund of nearly two-thirds of the amount that they owe, I would, I would like to see at least three years, a maximum of three years for the two. Two years, I think, is a little, but three years, I think, is reasonable, considering they're getting the $540,000 back.
Well, I'm going to say a couple comments, and then I'll let Mr. Snyder respond, I guess that would be important. I think I kind of agree with Mr. Betts at this point. To go back and recalculate all this is showing uncertainty to the industry at this time and his tenants, and I think we need to focus on what's presented this time and keep those comments close to us, that in the future, maybe if this ever comes forth again, that we talk about the deferment agreements in a shorter period of time rather than this lengthy. Mr. Betts, do you have other comments, or do you want to hear from Mr. Snyder first?
Just other comment is, is a lot of these funds are going to be sitting in an account for a long time. So, you know, when they're paid in, the diff fees aren't spent right away, they're collected and gathered and sit there, so you're putting a burden on somebody for money that's not actually being put to use at the time. So the obligation is still there to pay it, just spreading out the time a little bit.
Mr. Snyder, allow you to, if you want to rebut any of this?
I hadn't prepared one. I guess, I do, I think there are a couple important issues about our project. We did, we were able to, we were planning on going, as you may recall, we have three buildings, we were just planning on building one of them initially, and due to this agreement, we ended up pulling the trigger and building the second building, which I think will bring in an additional approximately $700,000, maybe a little bit less in cultivation tax this year that otherwise wouldn't have been there. So I think from the city's standpoint, it is a very, it is a very, I think, intelligent thing to do, because it did allow us to go forward with this, with this second building this year. And so you'll get that money back, back very quickly. In addition to that, you know, Candaceant is taking space in both of our buildings, and, you know, Candaceant was looking, you know, they needed space, they needed it, they needed it right away. And so I think by allowing, by having the space available right now for them to move into, you know, we were able to accommodate them and, I think, sort of prevent them from looking elsewhere, because, and it keeps them in the town. And I think that's a very important thing for the, for the city, they're a very good employer. They're going to take a total of about 70,000 square feet at our project now, and maybe even more space. And so, again, I think that when we contemplated this, we were really just going to do one building, and this, you know, this deferment allowed me to talk to my partners and to go ahead and do another building, which the city will get that, you know, get that money right away, and it will keep Candaceant here. And we have, and we have some other really good tenants too. So I do think it's a intelligent thing for the city to do. I do understand the history of having some issues with these development impact fees, but there will be none on my project, I can assure the council of that. So unless you have anything else, I'm happy to answer, any questions?
I have Mr. Betts in the queue.
Can I make a motion?
I have no one else in the queue at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into the attached development impact fee deferment agreement and attached lien agreement as presented in the staff report and following the time schedule as presented in the staff report, but making the corrections to the math as was mentioned previously by Councilwoman Zavala.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I do have a second, any more discussion at this point? Ms. Zavala?
And this, unfortunately, I'm going to have to vote no, just because I can't agree with the length of the time of the deferment, but, you know, I definitely do want your project to be successful. I would have voted for a deferment for the development impact fees, I just can't do five to six years.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, just, you know, one quick thing, so everybody is, you know, when the housing industry was collapsing, I remember the county relaxed their diff fees as a way to spur, you know, to keep things going. So it's not unheard of to do something like this to try and support an industry. So anyhow, I'm ready to vote, Mr. Mayor.
I have nobody else in the queue, please vote. City clerk?
Motion passes with Mayor Protem Zavala opposed.
Thank you very much. Item number 16 is a resolution of the attention, an attention to Annex 259, number 259, accessible parcels commonly known as Rancho del Oro to the City of Desert Hot Springs Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District, number two. Community Development Director, Daniel Porus?
Mayor, excuse me, before we continue on this, I have property in Rancho del Oro, so I will refuse, thank you.
Mr. Porus, if you can wait till Mr. Betts leaves the room, then we may begin. All right, Mr. Betts is off the dais, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Rancho del Oro subdivision is located on North Side of Mission Lakes between Sonora and West Drive. In 1992 and 93, there was 259 lots, single-family homes that were constructed, and majority of the perimeter was installed. However, during that time, there were no permanent provisions that were made for the maintenance of the landscape around the perimeter. There was also no assessment district that would establish your form. Normally during that time, whenever a development gets constructed, some type of either assessment district or landscape district or an HOA is formed that assesses the properties, certain fees are then used to pay for the cost of ongoing maintenance. In this case, initially, the developer was maintaining the perimeter. At one point in the city's interest, the city took over the maintenance, and in the last few years, city staff has worked with local residents from the Rancho del Oro development to try to determine and come up with a permanent solution to help fund the ongoing landscape maintenance for the entire perimeter. There has been many meetings that have been held in different, in different times in the last three years. During these meetings, we have reviewed different landscape options, different landscape maintenance costs, and various plant pellets. In 2017, we moved forward, city council held all the required meetings and public hearings to initiate the annexation into the district and moved forward into a vote. Ultimately, however, the annexation into the district failed. Subsequently, the city received a petition from 93 property owners within the Rancho del Oro development to again initiate the annexation into the district. In response to the petition, staff presents the attached resolutions for city council's consideration to initiate the annexation into the district. What this means is if the city council adopts the attached resolutions, it would commence the process to annex into the district of the Rancho del Oro development, or the properties within the Rancho del Oro development. Staff recommends that city council adopt the resolution of initiation as well as the resolution of intention, preliminary approving, annexation number 18, Zone 19, a time and place of a public hearing for the proposed annexation. We also have our consultants here available if you have any questions, and staff will gladly answer any questions. Thank you.
This is round two, right?
Correct.
We're going to give another shot, right, Joe?
Yeah.
All right. Do I have any comments from the public? At this time, if you'd like to step forward, three minutes will begin when you state your name. I see no one standing up. I will, second call, final call, close public comments, and I'll go to council comments. I have none in the queue, entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
I have a second by Ms. Zavala, any other comments? I see none, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Would someone call Mr. Betts back into the room? As you step into the dais, I will announce the next item, number, item number seven is the ordinance regulating the use and operation of public dog parks. Our city attorney, Ms. Marotti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is just that, it's an ordinance regulating the use of the dog parks. We have some great dog parks in our community, and in order to promulgate rules and make sure that the dog parks are running smoothly, we need, we needed to draft an ordinance to make sure that we could enforce those rules. So what you have before you tonight is a new chapter proposed in the municipal code. Some of the key features include requiring all dogs to be licensed and vaccinated, the dogs, owners must, you know, be in attendance at all times, and basically, there's also some enforcement language in the ordinance about, you know, ejecting persons out of the park, et cetera, who violate the rules and that kind of thing. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any specifics on the ordinance, but with that, that would conclude my staff report.
Mr. City Manager, how many dog parks do we have a little over a year ago in the City of Desert Hot Springs?
We had none.
How many do we have today?
We have two, sir.
Thank you very much for the work you did with that. Do I have any public comments on this item? I see none, final call. I'll go to city council comments, Mr. McKee.
I've gone through this pretty heavily, and I would suggest that we modify a couple of things on here. First, on page, packet page 83, middle of the page, it's a continuation of 1224070C. I would suggest that instead of the first violation being just the day gone, that it'd be seven days, the second violation be 30 days, the third violation be 90 days, and the fourth violation be 180 days. Because I think those, those periods of time are much too, too small for being ejected, because I don't think we're going to be kicking people out for small things. The second thing I would suggest is below that, 122480, section A, I would like it to read, "The city manager shall suggest additional rules and regulations." With the bottom of it, "The city council will approve dog park regulations." And those are the suggestions I would have.
Any objections from staff?
No, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to see on the rule signs, Danny, that we have the animal care control phone number on there.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, there's been some questions keep coming up on social media, so I wanted to ask you here in this forum. The only place, the only parks where dogs are allowed are actually in the new dog parks that have been put in in the last year, correct? We had none before that, right? Off the, no, my understanding is, like, for example, Mission Springs Park, are dogs allowed in that park?
No.
No, they're not.
Not on a leash, not off a leash?
That's correct.
They were allowed at Rotary Park, though, as long as they were on a leash.
But I think for the viewing public, that may be a surprise, because the discussion was, people have their dogs in the park on a leash, and they're not supposed to be, or off the leash, they're not supposed to be off the leash, they're not supposed to be in the park at all. So maybe we can get some signage that's more clear or more visible?
Yes.
And just be aware that we have two places where you can take your dog to a park, other than maybe out in the nature trails, and that would be Wardman Park at the dog park, and what is it, Rotary Park?
Noon Rotary Jack Webb Dog Park.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a good, good thing to emphasize that the only two places you can have your dog off a leash are in your yard and in the dog parks. And those are theoretically the only places in the city that they, that a dog the only places in the city that, that they, that a dog cannot be off leash.
It seems to be all over the streets, but we got our animal control gonna start working on that also. And the only other thing I say is I support Councilmember McKee's suggested changes.
Ms. Zavala?
Oh, the only question was in regards to, so if the dog, like, isn't licensed, would that be a violation?
Correct.
If that's the case, though, would they be able to return as soon as they get the license, or would they have to wait, like, a certain amount of time? Okay, perfect.
I have nobody else in the queue. We're into public comments, so entertain a motion.
Move staff recommendation.
With your... With your amendments.
With my amended portion.
All right, do you have a second? All right, a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion, motion passes unanimously. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council, adding chapter twelve point two-four, Dog Park Regulations, to Title Twelve, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, and amending section nine point oh-four point oh-four-zero, Animals in Public Parks of Chapter nine point oh-four, General offenses of Title Nine, Public Peace and Welfare of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code, to regulate the use and operation of public dog parks as amended.
Item number eight is a resolution of the attention to annex two parcels, annexation number fourteen, located at twelve one oh-six Palm Drive, APN six four one one zero one zero zero five, and the east of Palm Drive, north of Akoma Avenue, and south of Pearson Boulevard, APN six four one one zero one zero zero six, to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District, number twenty-ten dash one, Services La Plaza Center LLC.
Wow, and I'm really close to this one, 'cause I'm one-two-one zero-six and a half, so I'm gonna recuse, Mr. Mayor.
We were watching out for you.
Mr. Tanner, is it gonna be you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. This item is to set the date for a public hearing to establish, or, excuse me, to annex this property into the CFD. As you know, this district provides additional funding for landscape maintenance, lining, and drainage basin services. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions for staff? Mr. McKee?
Move staff recommendation.
Is there a second? Is there any public comments? It's the time that you may speak on this item, last call. All right, we'll move the item. It's been seconded, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Someone call Mr. Betts back in the room?
Except he's got a leash, no, he doesn't have to leash.
No, the next two, I think he's okay. Number nine, resolution of attention to annex number one parcel, annexation number twenty-eight, located east of Little Morongo Road and north of Fifteenth Avenue, APN six-six-five dash zero-five-zero dash zero-two-one, to the City of Desert Hot Springs Community Facilities District, number twenty-ten dash one, Services. Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this is an item to establish a public hearing date for the landscaping, lighting, maintenance district.
Do you have any public comments on this item? I see none, I'll entertain a motion. And a second, any more public com, or any more comments from council? I see none, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Last item on our agenda tonight is item number ten, resolution of attention to create a special tax area, Zone Thirty-three for property, APN six-six-five dash zero-five-zero dash zero-two-one, located north of Fifteenth Avenue and east of Little Morongo Road, to the Desert Hot Springs Special Public Safety Tax Area. Mr. Tanner?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is to establish a date for the public hearing for this property annexed into the Public Safety District, which pays for police and fire services.
Any public comments on this item? Let me speak at this time. Last call, final call. Move, actually...
Staff recommendation.
Thank you. Motion, is there a second? There is a second. See any other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes for one, with Councilmember Betts opposed.
Thank you very much. The consent calendar tonight, all items were approved. Anybody would like to talk about future agenda items, please see our city manager. Anybody in the public that did not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting that would like to speak now. I see nobody coming forth. I know this is unusual, but it is seven-twelve. Good night. This meeting is adjourned.